Finance and facilities. Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
This is board member of HELPS. It would have been her last board meeting, but she's not able to come tonight. So Stephen has graciously agreed to step up. Stephen, take it away.
Let's see. No, I'm happy to take over. I've been on the committee now for a year and a half. So, no, I like to think I'm familiar with most of the issues. So I'm looking forward to, you know, stepping up and chairing the meeting as we go forward.
Thank you.
That'd be good.
First item from the agenda below finance facilities is the presentation of revenue expense report, which I believe Adam is going to do? Or Donna?
Donna.
Donna always does that.
Yeah.
She can do it every single day.
She can.
She's been doing them for so many years.
Yes. There we go. All right. So this is the report for the 10-month period ended June 30, 2023. And as of this point, we're at about $57,683,000 in revenues. At this point, the majority of the revenue has been realized. And for the remainder of the year, I anticipate a small increase in the summer tuition revenue, fee revenue, chargeback revenue, and other revenue credit-free. But overall, I don't expect much of a fluctuation between this June 30 number and the final 8/31 number. So I'm anticipating that around $57,600,000 or $8,000, give or take a couple hundred thousand, but that's about where we're going to be in revenue. For the expenditures, at this point, we're at $46,442,000. We have 83% of the fiscal year completed, and we're looking at expenses trending to be under budget in three of four categories. For personnel and benefits, I'm estimating about a $1.5 to $2 million savings, primarily due to the vacancies. The only category that may be overspent is within instructional salaries. And this category had the least amount of vacancies out of the four. For benefits, it's also impacted by the vacancies, and so I'm expecting those to be done as well. Health insurance is also underspent due to savings from the D-HIC premium holiday. And in other taxes and benefits, that's significantly underspent, and that's primarily due to savings related to unemployment benefits. It was budgeted at about $250,000, and we've only had about $18,000 worth of claims. So, and then finally, in contractual, I'm projecting about a $400,000 savings. And some notable mentions that in bad debts, I'm expecting bad debt write-offs to be at about $400,000, about $180,000 over budget. This is based on about $2.6 million in uncollected debt dating back to 2021. I'm expecting to be overspent in contract guards at about $80,000, and I'm also expecting that utilities will be overspent. But overall, it looks like the revenue losses will be offset by savings and expenditures. And as of now, I'm projecting that we will end the year flat or with a slight loss. Any questions?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is our next 10 presentations from Mr. Alguieri. Turn. And Tony talked as quickly as I do, so if you have questions, be sure, be sure to stop him way through.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much, everybody. Thanks for letting me come here and visit you tonight and give a quick update on where we are with the master plan. At a high level, I should just start off twice mentioning that we had a great meeting this afternoon with the county executive's office, and they had a couple bits of suggestions, criticisms. And so there's two slides in this deck that are not in the handouts. They suggested that we put them in for some added context. So that's where we'll start, actually. They suggested, starting with this, sort of the precursor to this whole endeavor of the master plan, which had to do with a look back at the SUNY system. What you're looking at on the screen is the enrollment over the past 50, 60 years. The orange line is the state-operated, the four-years, and the blue is the community colleges, which you'll see. I'm just gonna, is it okay if I just leave just a point to the, does this have a? Yeah. In this period of the aughts, a lot of students, enrollment's at its peak, and the students essentially are constrained in their opportunities in terms of admissions to the four-years. There's too many students for too few spaces, and so it expresses itself, or expressed itself, in a surplus of students for the community colleges. Boom times, absolute boom times for the community colleges. I mention this because that boom and bust cycle has actually happened in the past. About 45 years ago, 40 years ago, we went through a similar cycle. And that's the context in which we started off this master plan, that there was this precipitous decline. We knew it was coming, and now it was upon us, and frankly, it would only get worse as the years go by. So what could we look at from the history, and how can we learn for the future? I should mention, though, that although this context was statewide, in fact nationwide, at Dutchess it manifested more intensely. And what this slide is showing you is Dutchess relative to other institutions in the region. Dutchess lost more students than other institutions, and we, again, tried to unpack that and look for a reason for that. And I put this slide on the screen, again, for context, this is Nogatuck. They're in Connecticut, about as far, if you got in a car right now and drove over to the Connecticut border, and then went as far again, so a half an hour, then another half an hour, that's Nogatuck. And we use them as an analog because they're kind of you, same scale, geographically, same principle. But you see the two lines? Nogatuck is that orange line, and they were able to withstand this decline better, we would argue, than Dutchess was, in part because of their programming. This is Nogatuck on the left, this is Dutchess on the right. So Dutchess and that boom time, when everyone was looking for the liberal arts transfer degree, because remember, too many students, too few spaces. How do we, how does a student position themselves favorably to get that four-year degree? You know, you go to Dutchess, you get a phenomenal education, great degree, great reputation, and then you, you know, you shoot for the stars from there. When that's no longer the coin of the realm, when that's no longer the, in such high demand, what really is sort of carried Nogatuck, and we would argue other institutions, is that attention to career and technical education, workforce development, and the connection between the college and the community and the workforce. So that's, I put that just sort of as a precursor for where we started all this. And this is deliberately a squint test. We were also asked to speak to the financial, the operational piece of a college. What you're looking at here is all the courses taught at DCC, 2019 fall, by enrollment. This is headcount. So on the left, you've got English, you've got math, you've got biology. You see how all the tall peaks. Out at the far right, you've got the specialty programs, the things that differentiate you, that make you excellent, that make you different, that make a student say, wait a minute, I could go to Binghamton, but I really, what I want is right here in Dutchess, so I'm gonna go here. But to be blunt, the content on the right is expensive, and is probably a lost leader. The content on the left pays the bills. And so in this context of trying to focus on the right side of the screen, because you're thinking about career and technical education, you're thinking about unique one-offs that marry to the community, you also gotta pay attention to the left side, which is, how do we get those numbers up? And how do we get the content on the left that effectively pays for the content on the right? And that's a struggle, excuse me, when we're looking at an overall context of enrollment So with that, the first piece of the master plan was the environmental scan. We looked at it through multiple lenses. First and foremost, we looked at regional and national data related to workforce development. What jobs are needed in the region? What is the expectation over the coming years? And we paid special attention to mill-skilled occupations, which, for which an associate's degree would be sufficient. We interviewed about 120 folks in the region because we wanted to couple that broad statewide data with really targeted Dutchess County data. And then we also layered onto that a close look at why local students are leaving. If a student doesn't matriculate at Dutchess and they go somewhere else, where are they going and why? And that was, again, going back to the initial slides, that was a particularly important point, because as those institutions had capacity, when Binghamton was no longer pushing students away, but conversely, was actually, you know, actively recruiting, it represented a pull from Dutchess County. One of the things that we've found from looking at this was that a key reason students are leaving is to get programming, to get academic programs that obviously they can't find in the county, even if the jobs are necessarily here. So let's say civil engineering, you know, I started off on a little bit of a tangent. We've got $1 billion in the governor's budget over the next decade in water control, water quality management, civil engineering, New York watershed, you know, drinking water, all that good stuff. But if you wanted to get a civil engineering degree, you have to leave Dutchess County. There's no, there's no opportunities here. So that's what some of this data was picking up. And we rolled that up into this slide, where we would say that a primary opportunity for DCC in the future is what we call the white space. If you're going for a baccalaureate degree today, you have plenty of options downstate, you've got plenty of options further upstate, but there are really only two in this region, Purchase and New Paltz, that represent, you know, opportunities, with New Paltz being space-constrained, kept, and Purchase being a bit of a one-off, having unique, you know, with the conservatory and specialty programming. So if Dutchess might partner with one of these institutions that themselves are enrollment-challenged, and really, we always use the example of Canton, up on the Canadian border, their numbers are falling through the floor, but they have all this amazing technical programming. So if Dutchess could partner with an institution like that, which I want to emphasize is incentivized, they're looking for a partner for their own survival, and you have complementary or synergistic needs and synergistic skill sets, it's a win-win for everybody. We then also coupled that environmental scan with an academic scan. So we looked at these sort of broad statewide and local trends, and then we looked also at what does Dutchess teach and how does it teach it? And at a high level, our strategy's rolled up into two complementary pieces. The first, as we mentioned, was to be responsive to the community by developing bespoke, technically-oriented programming that meets the needs of the local workforce and begins to assist local employers fill jobs, and conversely, allows a DCC student to sort of reach for the stars, to start their academic program here, but remain at home while achieving a baccalaureate in the county. So, you know, applied psychology, healthcare management, all these fields that we identified as being in great demand by local employers, you know, Vassar Medical, they were all about healthcare management, and we're constantly having to recruit outside the region at great expense to them, that it would be phenomenal if there was that sort of a pathway to a career locally. In all, there were somewhere about 150, 160 permutations, but we edited them. We screened out those programs which we suggested were going to be more expensive to operate than to, than would accrue in terms of enrollment. And so what you're looking at here on the screen are those programs that we think could be implemented in, on the lower left, at the shortest possible timeframe, with minimal investment in terms of dollars, but also minimal administrative review. Can we get this started in September was sort of the criterion? And then all the way on the upper right, programs that would require building out new facilities, or going through state approvals processes, or building consensus and agreement within the county or the region or wherever, that would have more administrative review. But we really focused on the early wins, because to be blunt, the crisis is now, and the solutions have to manifest in the short term. At a high level for the academic scan, what we developed was this lexicon of additive pieces. So starting with DCC excellence, something that college already does phenomenally well, supplementing that with an incentivized partner who adds value to what you already do and to whom you can add value as well, then adding that to a local workforce partner, and then select local resources, things that are unique to the Hudson Valley and Dutchess County specifically. So for example, real demand for, or real interest locally for students from agricultural science and biological sciences. So the opportunity of having a partnership with something like Common Ground Farm, where the biology program might have a specific, I don't wanna call it a track, but a manner of acquiring that kind of agricultural background locally that has real hands-in-the-ground component to it. So that when the student graduates, in principle with a four-year or degree or beyond, that they've got that really to show for, but that they're also, it's sticky. They're sticking in the region, and they have roots that are real beyond their family connections that tie them back to the region, and hopefully a job when they graduate. We then moved on to looking at utilization analysis of the space on campus, because how can we then manifest all that good work in terms of the physical limitation on the campus? So what you're looking at here are recent enrollment figures. The two bars on the left, fall 2017 and 2019, show the sort of tail end of what we had talked about earlier with the sort of the significant decline, and then obviously the pandemic with an even more precipitous decline. The other thing to notice about this chart is the split between the yellow and the blue. The blue are the FTEs, or full-time equivalent students, that are physically present on the campus, and the yellow is the online piece, in which you can see, obviously with the pandemic, the shift to online. And what we would expect is that that ratio continues to some extent. In other words, it doesn't snap back to 2017. We had good conversations with the campus about a 10-year projection, what that means. And to be blunt, if the past 10 years were challenging, the next 10 years are likely to be even more challenging. We've got the financial downturn in 2008, we've got the pandemic, and if you look at birth rates, if you look at demographics, they're just continuing to slide. And I don't mean to get, go off on a tangent, but if we could look at real estate values, we could look at the opportunities for young people to buy a home in the region and start a family. There's so many lenses through which we could look, and the unfortunate reality is that they all conspire towards a very, very challenging future. So we don't put the 10-year projections up there to be pessimistic or to be downers about this, just the opposite, it's to be realistic. One thing to notice between the option A and the option B was we talked with the campus about alternate futures of online versus in-person education. And ultimately, what was discussed, what was selected, was that for the campus's survival, and frankly also for the campus's mission, it's gotta be an in-person component, that stickiness, that why should a student physically come to campus as opposed to just logging onto a computer? And how can Dutchess effectively compete when you've got institutions like SUNY online? You know, the entire SUNY system launching this massive effort toward online education, or what CUNY is doing in the online space, not to mention private investment firms like 2U or Chegg or Southern New Hampshire that are seeking to own the space as well. There's gotta be a sticky in-county component to it. What those numbers mean, just to go, sorry, just to go back. So what we're looking at really is about 2,000 FTEs in terms of the scale of the campus. And the meat of the matter was, does that manifest in the form of 900 FTEs in person? Does that manifest in the neighborhood of 1,400 FTEs? It's a fundamentally different campus than it was 10 or 15 years ago. In terms of space, obviously that has implications. In terms of the space need, if we were looking at the fall '21 or '22 numbers, the amount of space required is about half of what the campus has today. The campus currently has 360,000 square feet. What we're projecting, what we've built the plan around, is around 200,000 square feet. That positions the campus well for that sort of baseline amount, but also provides significant cover for the retooling of space. To teach the next generation of students, the next generation of academic programs, we've gotta have different classrooms, we've gotta have different gathering spaces, we've gotta have different food service. It's a fundamentally different campus than it was 15 years ago. We're living in a different reality. So that brings us to the redevelopment plan. So how do we make that manifest? One of the first things we did was we looked at the conditions of the existing buildings, and we did a triage. What you're looking at on the screen is a squint test. It's all the buildings on campus ranked by their general condition. Bound, SSB, and Washington, recently constructed, in very good shape, require minimal investment. CBI and Dutchess Drummond, however, are on the cusp. There is a need to put significant money into them, in the tens of millions of dollars. The real challenge for DCC is the quantity of space that's embodied in those bottom three buildings, Falcon, Taconic, and Hudson. They're great buildings. I'm not suggesting demolishing them, I'm not suggesting writing them off by any means, but it's simply to say that if one were to bring them up to what they need to be, if you were to make them ADA compliant, if you were to renovate the mechanical system so they don't leak like sieves, it's just, you can see the numbers in front of you, it's a large amount of money. And we can't, in the context of enrollment declines, in the context of everything we've just discussed, go to the county and say, can we please have 400 million, or can we, it's just, but that's sort of the precursor. And just, you know the campus, but just again, the county requested that we put this slide in to show where those buildings of better or worse condition are. The conclusion that's emerged is that DCC reorganized itself around the north quad, building on those green buildings, those good buildings, as well as a renovation of Dutchess and Drummond Hall, putting the scarce dollars into the renovation of those facilities to reestablish the campus center and sort of create a critical mass. So when a student comes on campus, there's not a wandering like marbles in an open box, but they really feel that density. Remember, we want to give the students a reason to come to campus, a sense of belonging, a sense of arrival, all that sort of, you know, that magic of the college experience that doesn't happen when you've got 900 students distributed over the acreage that you've got. There's a need to sort of compact, and when you walk into a building, feel that spark and that energy. So we've organized the plan into three terms, short, intermediate, and long, based on different timeframes, with the long term being to try to give a sense of what can happen to the campus after the 10 years are up. In other words, what does one do with Falcon, Hudson, and Taconic? In the short term, absolutely critical, a series of deferred maintenance backlog issues, utilities need upgrade, there's ADA issues, accessibility's gotta be paramount, I mean, it's a law, we have to comply, and perhaps most importantly, the air handling units in CBI. They're just on their last legs, and it's a really critical piece that has to be front-loaded. Next, perhaps more discretionary, there's the renovation and retrofit of the ballfields. Again, we're not renovating Falcon, but there's a need for that sort of athletics, recreation, wellness experience when a student comes to campus. There's a, you know, a feeling of the campus being tended and cared for, and the ballfields is a perfect opportunity for that gathering moment and that sort of spirit. Two complementary pieces. If we're going to renovate Dutchess and Drummond, we've got to take out some select program in the meantime. For example, there's the radio station in place, and the college may elect to not do this, but if you're gonna renovate Dutchess and Drummond, presumably you'll wanna move that somewhere else. You're gonna wanna move student government, so that continues its activities. You're gonna wanna move the pantry, obviously. So we're suggesting a modest investment in Hudson to facilitate that, to swing-space that. And then we're also suggesting relocating programming from Taconic to Fishkill, with the opening of the new Mechatronics Lab. This is something that was written about in the academic scan about three years ago, that the idea of creating a critical mass, a density, Mechatronics on its own is phenomenal, but it is one thing. But if we pair that with engineering, with electrical technologies, perhaps with architecture, with construction, and we create sort of a critical energy around these technologies in one place, it both energizes Fishkill, but perhaps again, more importantly, gives the students a sense of purpose, and you know, why am I going to this location? So it involves the select relocation of some facilities that are currently in Taconic. Then we come to what we've described as the capstone for the short-term plan, the renovation of Dutchess and Drummond. In the abstract, listen, you know, 30,000 foot, you're flying over the campus and you're looking down, what you might say is, well, the first thing we gotta do is Hudson, right? I mean, it's a big building, it's a campus in a box, we could do Hudson. But as you saw from the earlier sheet, we can't do Hudson. It simply becomes crushingly expensive in the context of what we're doing. We can do all of that in Dutchess and Drummond. We can rethink the student gathering spaces, so if we're convening an event, we've got guest speakers in the Ritz Lounge, you know, what might that look like? We've made significant investments already in the Black Box Theater. It faces both the north and the south. It can really become that revitalized campus center of the new DCC. I think perhaps most importantly, though, that image on the lower right. What we see on campuses, well, we've seen it for the past decade, but what I think is increasing in need following the pandemic is this notion of a learning commons. It's a place where the student can predictably come and find that sort of energy of learning, but often energy of learning that's unstructured. The jargon at the conference is this, you know, a community of active learners, but it's really, really significant, it's that sort of spark. And this is why I went to college. So in this case, it might mean a place for tutoring, it might mean a place for group study, casual, unstructured. It might also mean entrepreneurship spaces. It might be where conferences are held, you've got guest speakers. It's where the campus begins to become a focal point of the community. It might have maker space, whether that's sewing machines and, you know, art studios, or it's 3D printers. But it's the place where the students who are, you know, I'll just even say outside of Dutchess County, you're over in Ellenville, I wanna be there because that's where the action is, that's where the energy is. And that would, in principle, go into this facility, along with like the library. So again, it becomes a sort of student hub, student center. Moving on to the intermediate term, so years six through 10, what we would suggest, a key component of the plan, is the renovation then of CBI. Now, CBI does not need as much work. The windows are double-glazed, it's got insulation in its envelope, it's not a bad building, but it does need a good bit of work, principally on the interior. The guts of the building are not relevant to what the college needs today or for the future. So a good example, the data center. What a data center was 20, 25 years ago is just obviously not what a data center is today. All that space can be reclaimed. There's a significant need to redevelop the classrooms. The idea that a student is gonna wanna come for a 50-minute lecture, and I'm just realizing, I'm sorry, I've lectured on for long enough, so, sorry, but...
Don't worry.
It's awful, right? It's just awful. So the idea that these classrooms can be renovated and become a place of active learning, where they're learning in groups, and they're meeting their, not just their friends, but their future colleagues in the workplace, they're meeting professors, people are going to help them professionally. All of that can happen here, but it can't happen here in its current configuration. Obviously, there's the loading dock, and the idea if we're gonna transition from Hudson, then we'd need an adequate loading dock on the upper campus. And food service. One of the really important points the master plan grappled with is the scale of activity and space occupied in Dutchess Drummond by the food service, and it's just out of scale relative to the quantity of students you're serving. The image you're looking at on the screen is from Oneonta. They do about 300 to 350 transactions there a day. It's all local food, it's all farm-to-table, but it's commissary type, it's prepared off-site and it's brought on. So it's more grab-and-go. But one of the key things that Oneonta says about it, it allows them to be more adaptive and nimble to the students' demands. So they're not locked into the financial structure of a formal cafeteria with the burden that comes with that, of needing to offer that wide range of food every day. It's just, it's crushing. I mean, you know that. And then also in the intermediate term, programmatic restacks. Washington, Bound, SSB, they're great buildings, but again, they need a fine tuning. So we'll pick on Bound, for example, in the upper left. Again, no student will ever wanna take a class, I mean, that's just not the way that's gonna be taught in the future, especially in the context of post-pandemic. What we would expect is going to happen, to try to get those numbers up, is that the college will wanna be offering more hybrid coursework, where students can drop in or drop out based on their schedules. I can't make it to class today, I can't get coverage for the daycare, I need to log on from home. Or, well, I'm already on campus for my English class in the morning, so I'm gonna stick around and I'm gonna show up. And the professor doesn't know what's gonna manifest. And we're seeing this in some of the other SUNY institutions. And so the classrooms are being redesigned in a more hybrid format, where there's dual monitors either end of the room, more space for the students. It's a fundamentally different layout, it requires more space, but it requires a retooling. And the other thing I'll mention is SSB, again, a phenomenal building when it was built, but it was built around a model of campus services that is no longer relevant today. And there's a significant need to adapt and reconfigure the spaces in that building, again, for the students' benefit, because how a student wants to receive those services is very different than it was 20 years ago. Then last, I'll just signal the longer-term projects. Man, we tried hard to fight to get Falcon earlier in the project. It's just, as you see from the dollars, it's just, you know, it's obviously the locus of athletics, wellness, and recreation, and clearly, there are so many issues in the locker rooms, in the shower facilities, in the offices, the athletics offices. But it's just, to do that building properly, there's no way to do that building by half-measures. You know, we can put a few million dollars into that building, a few million dollars isn't gonna, isn't gonna address those locker room issues. Taconic and Hudson, we're not by any means suggesting demolishing, we're actually thinking that those buildings have great long-term value, but they don't have great long-term value in the context of where we anticipate the campus pivoting in that short term. What we would suggest is that they are phenomenal buildings for some of those partnership enterprises. So I'll use an example. Let's say, go back to what I was describing about civil engineering. No, if you want to do civil engineering, you're leaving, you're leaving not just the county, but the region. If you were to have a partnership with an institution that had that pathway, these buildings represent an opportunity for Dutchess to turn over that space to them, for them to develop on their dime, to... to offer the programming locally. So one of these institutions that's struggling, that's falling through the floor, could potentially take over space here and offer that degree locally. If we got in a car and I drove you down to Purchase, we'd see that with NYU Stern, we'd see that with LIU has a branch campus up there for precisely those reasons, to try to bring the campus to the students rather than the students to the campus. And Taconic might be a phenomenal facility for something like early childhood education for one of those partnership enterprises that the college might develop with regional partners. So that, again, the funding is coming from an external source, but the locus is here on campus and it's for the benefit of DCC students. And to close, a summary of the aggregate costing. What I should signal is a couple of things. In the two five-year timeframes, we've got these two signature projects. And the first one, the Duchess Drumland renovation, and in the second one, the CBI renovation. What I want to mention about the Duchess Drumland renovation is it really is one of these pivotal next generation of the campus projects. Renovations often aren't sexy. They're often not, you know, you generate the beautiful image and you put it on the screen and everybody oozes and ahs. But the interior of that and what that can do for the college in terms of demonstrating DCC's commitment to being a true post-pandemic college is phenomenal. So again, what we're recommending is that it be done as a piece, that it be done as quickly as possible, and that it be implemented quickly. The other thing I wanted to mention about the chart is it's got three columns, construction costs, project costs, and then costs with escalation. Just sorry if I'm telling you something you already know, but the construction cost is the amount you pay the contractor. The project costs, however, are the true cost to the college. It includes things like fees, surveying, administration. Presumably, you're going to hire a project manager or pay a project manager internally to manage especially these larger ticket items, internal insurances. And then escalation is essentially inflation, it's the cost of money. And I just, I know you all know this, but the costs in 2020, the escalation was about twenty percent annually. In 2021 was twelve percent. So what you're seeing in terms of these numbers is a phenomenal hit with escalation, both historically. And our estimators are telling us that it's not going to light up, that they do not see the foreseeable future. Construction is not going to get cheaper. And so we've built those costs into the plan. And in previous years, two thousand and four, two thousand and eight, I wouldn't have said this, I would have said, you know, take your time. But one of the challenges with escalation being so high is the college is really incentivized to getting things done quickly. The more you can get done sooner, the less you pay overall. So with that, I'll turn it over to questions.
First, that's a lot of information. This is my third time as a tourist, so I'm pretty familiar with it now. But I just wanted to point out that earlier in our meeting today with Rachel and Jessica, head of the budget department, it was interesting because at first they seemed skeptical, at least initially, of renovating extra space. But they're both mothers, one with a twelve-year-old, the other with a, I think, a three-year-old. And so when they were talking about the different ways of learning now than it used to be, and we sat there like in my day, we're telling trudges, that has changed. They both got that because they're observing their own kids going through it. That was interesting to me because they're like, this is how you should present this in terms of arguing for more of the space. Because as, I can't remember who said it, but sometimes you may be looking at augmented reality that you're using. And you need space for that, you can't just be, everybody's nodding. So I'm preaching to the choir here, but at any rate, that was one of my takeaways today, was it was really positive that we were able to understand the way that they could find their way into thinking, oh yeah, we can support this. And the other was that they were very directional with, as you said, I mean, by the way, I can't believe you've got new slides there already. We walked down into torrential rain, I mean, actually, I had no umbrella, the rest of us were chicken and waited a while. But at any rate, they're very directional about saying, we think that the legislators will look at it this way. If you add this slide, if you add this bit of information, you can context about how the moment's shaping everywhere across New York in colleges, private and public, et cetera. So that was very helpful, long ago, to say. And they had a lot of questions, so. Questions for Tony?
How do you foresee, are you going to mothball those buildings that you're not working on? Or what will happen to those?
What we're suggesting with the plan is not that they be mothballed, but that the quantity of activities in those buildings be decreased so that maintenance can be lighter, so that the colleges have to, and ideally, heating costs, for example, and operations costs.
And in the interim, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And in the interim, I'd probably seek a partner to fill those facilities, is that the point?
To be blunt, that's a strategy for the college. I mean, yes.
And they can be used for swing space as well. Other questions?
I just, so when they're talking about change, like with Hudson Hall and partnering with somebody, I know that that's a problem for the college, but in terms of us, like on this plan, if we don't find a partner down the road, I imagine that all of this is fluid and we would come back.
Oh, the capital plans are updated pretty much constantly. This is just a
More.
Just a long-term projection.
Well, this is also using more data, to be honest with you.
I mean, the data's been great in comparing it and also pointing to other campuses that have had these successful partnerships and all of that. I just, that was just
And the partnerships, so for example, SUNY Canton, I believe that this negotiation started prior to COVID. Then COVID kind of stopped and the implementation kind of went away. There were, I believe, three or four programs that were supposed to be started to be offering here. And I was excited about the gaming, but that was in the future. But the reason I was telling our new trustee, Maya, earlier, when we were going through the gaming stuff, in my head, I thought it was all just going to be programming, you know, computer. But there were tons of English and literature courses because somebody has to tell the narrative, the story. Whatever is going on in there, there's an actual story, there are different plotlines that are all worked out here. I didn't even think about it, this would be a great opportunity for some of our students who can creatively, to get a degree in this field, not necessarily all takes to create these games, but to be part of it. So these are for the future. There's also engineering, I think, engineering technology. So it wouldn't be just civil engineer, but you would be able to do run CAD/CAM programs. Things that also are engineering companies here that are looking for talent will also need that talent too. So Alfred State, we wanted to partner with so that you could get a nursing degree and stay here. Again, these are all just trying to work out the articulation agreements, I believe, to get everything finalized.
Well, it seems like an exciting prospect.
And Tim Massey, our former trustee, was always upset because when you partner these ways, your first two years will be DCC, but then your last two, you'll be graduating from Alfred or Canton or whatever in terms of your degree, it'll be taught here, but you'll be graduating with a different degree. But I want to have DCC, that's a stupid college anyway, they're like, oh, they'll make it for you, so.
And Michael, I'm sorry to tag onto that, but I just want to mention that, go back to the operations plan. That notion of partnership is really fundamental to growing this. It's like, you know, it's a freebie. Every student that would have gone to Albany but that stays here, these numbers go up.
Because of the same, the basic courses, English, all the subjects that are almost a degree program that you take here. That's how you take, we would have teachers from the other colleges come here with a more advanced, or some of ours be accredited, so. Thank you, there's no other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, I have one more, just about the baseball fields. And I know we had visited that conversation last year, really felt like it wasn't a priority for the college at that time, giving a two million dollar investment into something that we felt like it wasn't, you know, something that wasn't a recruitment tool, although I read the study that was sent to us, that really was written for a four-year college. It felt like it was for retention and recruitment. Whereas I don't feel as though the college actively recruits for a baseball to spend two million dollars for currently enrolled fifteen students seems like an awful heavy investment in plan. I would just like to hear other thoughts from other individuals on the board relative to that.
So the way that I view a capital plan is this is kind of your wish list. This is if everything goes perfect, these are all of the projects that we would like to consider. And consider to me doesn't mean that we are going to support. So I am going to support a five-year capital project plan later this evening, not because I support every project in it, but because in a perfect world, these are all things that we could potentially vote on in the future. So there's further discussion on all of these items. But I agree with you, I'm not about to vote for two million dollars for a baseball field, but I'm not doing that tonight.
And that would be the legislators also who would be intimately involved in this. That's what Manuela said, it's a wish list, it really is like a wish list. You know, this is all we would like to have right now, if everything worked out, we could. But resource allocation is always a decision that's not easy for elected officials to make. So as I said, we're presenting our wish list, they have to be the ones to make the ultimate decision. Anybody else want to weigh in on that? Okay, a moment update, Scott.
Thank you, Tony.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so an update on where we're at, right up to the minute, we're about a little over twenty-seven hundred students enrolled for the hall for thirty-two thousand credits. That's four hundred and eighty-nine more students than we had last year at this time, which is twenty-two percent up. It's sixty-three hundred and fifty more credits, which is twenty-five percent up from where we were last year at this time. The only notable difference between the two years is that this year, the aviation maintenance cohort is totally full now. Last year, we were still building it, but once we adjust for that, we're up four hundred and eighty students and six thousand two hundred credits same point in time from where we were. We're, each week for the past four months, we've increased the gaps between the years. So it's been growing every single week. We're now fifteen weeks in the new student enrollment, and we have nine hundred and seventy-two new students registered and over a hundred and fifty more with appointments in the ACT Center to register for the next two weeks. All appointments to the end of next week are full. So after that, we moved to a model where people either zoom in or walk in. But we're also, the first time trying this week, we're trying to bring people in for group appointments. If they want to have an appointment rather than do the walk-in. Just started it yesterday, already have fifteen people signed up to do those group appointments. So that'll be coming in the next two minutes as well. At this point, last year, there were only five hundred and eighty-six new students registered. So we have three hundred and eighty-six more students than we did at the same point in time. With returning student enrollments, we're at about seventeen fifty. That's a hundred and three students above where we were last year. And it's, we've had a surge in the past couple of weeks, largely driven by power reach to students who have a Benet DCC in a couple of years. Those students are starting to come back, we're seeing some, the fruit is coming to bear from some of our efforts with those students. So while this number is more modest than the new student gain, to me, it's more impressive. Because we were down three hundred students in the spring. So it's actually coming from a much lower place and coming back in this one, and these students are a little enrolled earlier. So to me, a real increase that I think we can be more confident than with the new student increase. Full-time headcount is up twenty-nine percent. Part-time credits are up twelve percent, but the full-time, that's a really strong indicator for students who'll be taking more credits with us. In terms of applications, we're just under thirty-nine hundred right now. That's about six hundred and twenty more than we had at this point last year. They're continuing to come in heavily, over a hundred in the past week. We have over a hundred and fifty more applications than last year's final total. There are now two hundred and four students committed to living in the residence hall, about fifty more than last year at this time. We will probably be to the waiting list next week. The CIA once again is taking the top floor, they have an option for between ninety and a hundred and twenty spaces. They will be taking the one-twenty, they told us uniformly, they actually reached out to me today to ask if they could have more. They came to me, we're going to be full. In terms of cohorts in the hall, we have fifty-plus requests for the general neutral wing, twenty for the aviation and athletics wings. We also should have twenty to twenty-five housing insecure students in the hall and at least five students from outside the area from our agreement with New Paltz about their denied students. With the CIA, these will mention that it's a rate thirteen percent higher than what they gave last year. Couple of other observations, it looks like enrollment's going to be up to about seventy percent in person as opposed to sixty percent last year. There's been a definite change. In-person classes are filling and it's similar to online classes. The past couple of years, we've been having canceled in-person and moved to online just because of student demand. That's not happening this year. Another thing to keep in mind, so the budget over the fall is about ninety students and eight hundred credits below last year's enrollment. So when we're talking about these gaps, they're actually larger when they're in the budget. The budget was set on an increase of new students of five percent, so we were hoping that we would have an increase and a decline in the rate of decline with returning students, but we're hoping to exceed both of those. And finally, is that the caddies? They're really strong and I'm cautiously optimistic, but there is still some uncertainty as we go through the rest of the year. Last year at this time, only sixty percent of enrollment was in. I'm confident over the next two weeks, we're going to continue to grow the gap between where we are in the budget. But the two weeks prior to the start of classes, the first week of classes last year was insanely busy. There was a lot, a huge backup. We were doing over a thousand credits a day many of those days. And compared to the prior year, we did four thousand more credits at that time than we did. So we could start losing some at that point, but we're acting and preparing as if we're not, as if we're going to be as busy. So we want to give students every opportunity at all, and we do have more students in the pipeline. So like, I think that's when push is going to come to show, those last couple of weeks. I think, you know, I think we can pretty confidently say we're going to keep up. It's just a matter of how much. It could decrease from now, if I had to guess, it probably will decrease, but hopefully not too much. Questions?
You've been saying that every week.
I know.
I've been scared too to say anything, and every week I think, it's not, it's not now.
It's really the last two weeks where it's going to be scary.
Is it the economy or is it something else that we're doing that is more successful? Or are we reaching out to communities more?
There are a lot, there are probably fifteen different factors going into it. Some of it's low-hanging fruits, I mean, Tony just gave kind of bad news, but I don't disagree with what Tony's saying. The demographics are awful moving forward. We've done some good things, the agreements with New Paltz and Maristow. Our advertising is, and digital outreach to students is much more sophisticated than it was a year ago. We've done things in terms of advising that are getting many more students through more quickly, going to the students' group appointments, we've gone to the residence hall, we've got people meeting in Fishkill. All of those things have helped get students through very quickly. We have some of its new programs, I mean, aviation is exploding, the advertising with that has made a huge difference. As I said earlier, the maintenance program is full. Pilot programs probably tripled from last year. We've had to add classes all over the place for those students. So there's a lot of different things going on. Canvas retail management program is likely to be full, so that's a new program. And that's ultimately, if this is going to keep going, if we can keep this momentum going, we're going to need the new programs to generate it. Micro credentials could be possible for that. And I mean, no COVID vaccine helps too.
Any one submit any questions?
That's good news, Scott. Merely comment, it's great news for the college in general. I mean, this is exactly what I think we had been hoping for. Kudos to the team, because I know it took a lot of hard work to get there.
Well, also the social media outreach, as you said, is a huge improvement. I mean, huge. And that's with young people, that's how you reach them, so. Other things, to kind of correlate the last, this one with Tony's. If you remember where you had the chart where it said district review and more complicated in terms of programs. The ones on the lower left, quicker wins, those were ones, we also had explained that to Rachel and Jessica today, that those don't become quite that, the programs that we start out micro-credentially, then that ultimately can get you to the actual program itself later on. But that's how we have to move these things now forward, just like the retail management, Canvas. So thank you. Liaison report, trustee Castella, DCC Foundation?
Short and sweet, foundation strategic planning committee is working on a draft strategic plan. The David Copeland Dinner and Lecture will be held on September the fourteenth, five-thirty dinner, seven o'clock lecture. Formal invitation will follow, keep an eye out for that. And the foundation's board meeting will be September the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, and I guess Diana must be on vacation because I don't think I recall her meeting, I haven't seen her in the audience here before. If this is your situation, since we're running a little bit late, I'll make sure to. We welcome new board member Elizabeth Walstein, who is Director of the Walkway. We set tuition, I think we set the rates for the dorm costs, et cetera. But overall, the dorm obviously is improving the picture there. We're going to have a waitlist that makes it even better. We do have a new banker assigned now from the one who's been doing this, who is very friendly and they seem interested in helping us to work out maybe refinancing down the line as we move forward. We're going to wind up using, I believe it is a little over a million, almost two for fund balance this year. That primarily reflects losses with food. In turn, we haven't made a lot of money off of it, but we're blanching that loss. And the daycare always operates as a side loss. That's just the way it's built in there. Probably we don't have enough teachers to take a full complement of students, because we don't, we pay a lot for the assistant teachers that we need. That's basically it. Any other questions? If there's none, then we'll, if we would say, people like, we even like to break before we go to our main regular meeting. Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Any other chance to review the minutes for meeting on May 23rd? If so, I'm making a motion to approve a present. And you, is there a second? Leonard, any further discussion? All on paper, please say aye.
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 Any major extensions? Motion carries as well. Committee reports, and as a reminder, all the items that we discussed, and all the items, member reports have been discussed first at committee meetings and then often as we are also in our workshop. First, committee would be board policy, and then it's chaired by the D.C. Club.
We have our meeting and discussed these policies. And this is in, I'm offering three for board approval. First is Resolution 2023 dash 34, where trustees, myself, offer the following resolution and move towards adoption. Whereas in keeping with good governance practices, the Board of Trustees Policy Committee reviews board and college administrative policies on a regular basis. And whereas based upon this review, the Policy Committee has determined that the accommodative services policy should be reaffirmed and remain in effect now. Therefore, be it resolved that based upon the recommendations of the policy, the aforementioned accommodating service policy is hereby reaffirmed and is to remain in effect and be it further resolved that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Any further discussion? All on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any major extensions? Motion carries unanimously.
I offer Resolution 2023 dash 35. I offer the following resolution and move towards adoption. Whereas based upon this review, the Policy Committee has determined that the workplace violence prevention policy should be reaffirmed and remain in effect now. Therefore, be it resolved that based upon the recommendations of the Policy Committee, the aforementioned workplace prevention policy is hereby reaffirmed and is to remain in effect until and be it resolved, further resolved, that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Is there a second? Thank you, Angela. Any further discussion? All on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any major extensions? Motion carries.
And my last, I offer Resolution 2023 dash 36. Based, whereas based upon this review and input from the members of the Board of Trustees, the Policy Committee has determined that the policy on academic integrity needs to be revised now. Therefore, be it resolved that based upon the recommendation of the Policy Committee and review by the Board of Trustees, the revised policy on academic integrity, which is and shall be made part of the official minutes of the meeting, is hereby approved and be it further resolved that this policy shall be effective immediately and be it further resolved that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Second. Thank you. Further discussion? I want to just add that I know how hard work it is to speak on the Policy Committee, and the addition that was made is a smart move. I mean, AI is in the news every day these days about how it's changing how students are working, et cetera. So I think it's great that we got ahead of this. If there's no other further discussion, all on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any major extensions? Motion carries as well, and thank you, Avi, for all that work on there, as well as other members of the Policy Committee who may not be on there much longer. Sorry, to the next item on the agenda, which is finance and facilities. This is, this has been Sheila's last board meeting. Her term ends, at the end of, or ended, I should say, at the end of last month. And we'll be having a new individual place her, that is Evelyn Panici, formerly Ellen Constantina here in that way. She runs along with her family, rail carding. She's in fantastic condition, but Sheila's also been a wonderful addition this year. However, as you know now, our legislative capital becomes a chair, provisions, these are provisions tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I guess first, the committee report?
Yes.
Yeah. So we had several items that we discussed this month. We met on, back on January, July 17th. We discussed the budget. Adam Rathbun updated the committee on meetings he held with county legislators and the feedback he received regarding DCC's 23-24 proposed budget, which was approved by the board at our May meeting. And after careful consideration, the college is recommending a reduction in the increase from our local sponsor. Contribution from 4% to 2% in the amended budget will need approval by the board before it is submitted to the county. And I will have that resolution in a minute. And there was a lot of discussion on this point, and I just want to, you know, thank Dr. Jordan, Adam, and everyone else that worked on it. You know, looking at revisions to the budget and with the reduction of revenue, they took a hard look at it and considered reductions in expense to offset that and did not purely take it out of fund balance. So I, I want to thank them for the work that they put into coming to that conclusion. I think that's the point.
We should thank you as well for your vocal suggestion about why that would be conservative, to be something good.
Yeah, yep. All right, we also talked about the five-year capital plan for 2024 to '28, and the committee was provided an overview, which, you know, we discussed, got an overview as well in workshop a little bit. Adam Rathbun also reviewed a bid solicit for pavement striping, and I'll have a resolution for that in a minute as well. Adam also took us through an overview of the revenue expense through the period of June 30th. So again, we touched on that a little bit in workshop, but the committee was taken through that first. And then the transformation innovation fund, 75 million. Adam spoke to the committee about the transformation funds provided to SUNY through the New York State enacted budget in support of the transformation activities. The committee was provided with guidelines and a planning template showing the allowable uses of the funds. The college will provide SUNY with its plans for the use of these funds. That's due by the end of this week. Also, concurrent enrollment, a topic that's, you know, been a tough one that we've looked at for many months. And Dr. Jordan provided the committee with an update on the enrollment and the number of MOUs the college has received to date. At this time, the college has received 14 MOUs from participating high schools in Dutchess and Potomac County out of the potential 22 schools, and we're still working with some other schools. So I think we've got good progress in this area, which has been, you know, a tough, a tough one for the schools and the public to, you know, address and handle and accept. But I think, you know, we're doing a great job in moving this forward, getting them the information they need and, you know, coming to an agreement. So that's, that's great. So that was the items we discussed. With that, I'll move on to a couple of resolutions. The first one being with the budget. So I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. This is Resolution 2023 dash 37. Whereas the Board of Trustees voted on and approved the proposed annual operating budget for fiscal year 2023-24 by Resolution 2023-32. And whereas the college president recommends a revision in the previously approved local sponsor funding request from the County of Dutchess. And whereas the annual operating budget request of Dutchess Community College for the period of September 1, '23 through August 31, '24 has been developed in accordance with guidelines furnished by the State University of New York. And therefore, be it resolved that the amended operating budget for Dutchess Community College for the fiscal year September 1, '23 through August 31, '24 in the amount of $65,109,244, with a reduction in anticipated funding from the County of Dutchess by appropriations from fiscal year 2024 is $17,123,656, is hereby approved.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? All on paper, please say aye. Any major exceptions? Motion carries.
All right, the second resolution I have relates to the capital, five-year capital plan. It's Resolution 2023 dash 38. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the County of Dutchess and the State University of New York require the submission of a project list and estimated costs of capital construction and improvement projects for a five-year period. And whereas the educational, administrative, and support needs for rehabilitation, preservation, and improvement of facilities has been reviewed through the academic and facilities master plan, our next 10, and the master plan recommended the specific projects and priorities as indicated on the attached list. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the campus facilities projects listed on the attached document, which is to be made part of the minutes of this meeting, are hereby approved as Dutchess Community College's five-year capital project plan for the period 2024 to 2028.
Second. Thank you, Frank. Second, any further discussion?
I have one little thing to say. As regards the $2 million designated for the ball field. If you really look at that item, you see it's not just for a baseball field. It's for repairs of the water problems. It's for a new soccer field, which we don't even have. It's a, it's a much more complicated thing than just, oh, we're going to get a baseball field that we don't need because there's 15 people who play baseball. So I feel that that was misrepresented in our workshop and the, the school is recreating a community. We're creating a community here. We're retooling, we're rethinking everything, and it's very exciting. The, the learning comments that was described in the workshop. The learning comments that was described in the workshop, all these great things. And I think that, you know, good fields to play on and bringing soccer, which is hugely, hugely popular in Duchess County and in the surrounding counties. I just, I just had to speak up about the accuracy of that line item and make sure everybody remembers that.
Thank you, Darah. Any question? Do you want to say something?
I just want to be sure that the public and everyone in attendance understands that we are not voting on tens of millions of dollars in improvements or in spending tonight. This is a plan, and every single project in this plan will come before us again. And that is the time when the projects will really be debated on. This is a requirement for us to submit this plan. Plans change. This is a fluid document. But I don't want it to be misconstrued that the Board of Trustees voted to send tens of millions of dollars tonight by approving this.
Thank you. And no, this is just, as you said earlier, a plan that we would love to have if everything could work out nicely. And Darah is right, there is drainage that was addressed in there, lighting after what trustee Castella laid out last sentence on lighting, and I believe it's artificial turf. I'm just going in there. And just so everybody knows, today Jessica and Rachel were like, you can get that for two million? We don't think so. It's going to cost a lot more, so we'll say that. Adam Philcock. Are there any other comments or questions about this resolution? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any major extensions? That motion carries as well.
All right, I have one last resolution, and that's twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine, relating to a specific project for improvement on the campus. And I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the parking lot striping and marking has been determined to be necessary to maintain a safe environment. And whereas bids for the parking lot striping were duly advertised and requested for the parking lot striping and marking. And whereas bids were received as a result of the solicitation and were publicly opened and read aloud at three P M. on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And whereas vendors providing bid prices as shown on the tabulation sheet attached to this resolution. And whereas the low bid received meets the required specs specifications. Now therefore be it resolved that the bid received for the parking lot striping, base bid Lot E with option one, Lot D, and option two, Lot A, in accordance with the specifications, be awarded to Horizon Striping LLC, Wapingers Falls, New York, in the amount of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Thank you, Lynda. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any major extensions? Motion carries unanimously as well. And bring this up to Personnel, Community Relations, chaired by Angela Floodon.
Thank you.
Chair Floodon.
The personnel committee met and discussed personnel matters. We have two resolutions this evening. Resolution forty, I offer the following, move its adoption. Whereas we've been determined that to meet the needs of the college, the following new titles need to be created. Coordinator, Mechatronics Programming, full-time. Whereas section thirty-five in the Civil Service Law requires the title determinations of positions in the professional services be made right by the Board of Trustees. Now therefore be it resolved that approval is hereby given to create the aforementioned title of Coordinator, Mechatronics Programming. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any major extensions? Motion carries.
Resolution forty, I offer the following, move its adoption. Be it resolved based upon the recommendations of the President of the College, the attached list of the board meeting dates for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, which shall be made part of the official minutes of this meeting is hereby approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any major extensions? Motion carries. Thank you, all three of you chairs. Next item on the agenda is reported to student trustee, and we already told Maya she does not have to have a phone call. Introduce yourself.
I'm Maya Chincon. I'm a sophomore at Duchess Community College. I'm excited to, like, give my feedback and everything to everyone, and I hope you all are.
We're thrilled to have you all with us. It was a pleasure having you sworn in today too. Again, I do better. Maya transferred here from Seaton Hall in New Jersey. But she's not only a native, she is Angela's cousin. Angela will now finish she blade, everybody.
I am related to all of you.
At any rate, and Maya is studying nursing and hopes to transfer out or unless we could somehow create a four-year program here, which would be great. But just looking forward to helping people in the nursing profession and being a traveling nurse as well. So it's exciting to have someone up here with us again, looking forward to all the work. And I hope I didn't overwhelm you with all the information.
The next item on the agenda is my report, and I will try to be brief. At the conclusion of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three academic year, D C C cares and disburse more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in emergency grants, childcare subsidies, and housing support, serving more than two hundred and thirty students. About ninety-five thousand, this was for housing support for twenty-five or so housing insecure students. Thirty-eight was in childcare subsidies, fifty-eight was in academic support, including tuition and books, and almost sixty thousand was for non-academic support, including housing, transportation, and medical bills. I'm going to congratulate this college and D C C cares for showing that we do indeed care. Jordan Belles, an assistant professor of English, has been selected to the SUNY Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Social Justice Fellows Program. Now, like, fifteen fellows, if you don't know, you're in this program, that were selected from over one hundred applications, from faculty across SUNY campuses. This fellows program is envisioned as implementation support for the SUNY, for the new SUNY General Education Framework was adopted in November twenty twenty-one. They'll be responsible for a range of functions, including developing E I S J course resources, holding office hours for faculty developing or teaching D E I S J courses, contributing to the E I S J in the curriculum conference to be held in November twenty twenty-three, working in the SUNY Center for Professional Development Field, the D E I S J Course Career Certificate, and to assist SUNY in assessing the D E I S J component of general education. T-STEM is also hosting a five-week seminar program for ten new D C students. The program provides incoming students an opportunity to prepare for college-level work, attend skill-building workshops, and become one of the D C C prior to starting the fall semester. Diana Pollard, director of our D C C Foundation, is going to serve on the Conference Board for the Council for Advancement Support of Education. That's called CASE. She's going to take on the role of vice chair for next year's conference. Diana works really hard, and this is one way that she still shows it. Partnerships. D C C has rewarded New York State Pathways and Technology Elite College High School, High School P-Tech grant with Duchess Voces, which is the lead implementation partner of those Duchess Academy for Mechatronics and Smart Technology in partnership with us and the Council of Industry. Duchess Academy for Mechatronics and Smart Technology will follow a four-year P-Tech school within a school model. And for ninth and tenth grade, we located a dedicated rating for O A C Ketchum High School in Wapingers, and then for eleventh and twelfth grades at the D C C at Fishville Extension Site and the SUNY Future of Work Center Mechatronic Lab at Fishville. Students are introduced to elite college courses and experience to start in the ninth grade by earning twelve college credits of coursework and increase, an increase of course load to fourteen credits in tenth grade and eighteen credits in both eleventh and twelfth grades. For total assisting two credits earned to achieve an applied associate's degree in electrical technology. The combined Mechatronics Lab and new P-Tech program is the most significant investment in the Mid Hudson region in support of training the current and future workforce in the enhanced manufacturing industry. Finally, in May and June, President Jordan presented at four separate board meetings. This was to the D C C Foundation Board of Directors, the Dyson Foundation Board, the Council of Industry Board, and the Workforce Investment Board Directors to share D C's new and future program development partnerships and discuss our vision, discuss our vision of the workforce in the future. All were very well received. I want to personally thank the college and the foundation for showing support as our D C C family, Michael's in line, when we were honored at family services events of the year, excuse me, just almost two weeks ago. And a lot to have all various components, the families that we call families here. And like, D C C is part of it. And last but not least, we have a resolution prepared and going to introduce. And I don't know what number this is, twenty fifty-three dash something, but.
Four two, yeah.
Four two?
And a week, four two.
Thank you. Whereas Ms. Sheila Yu Lappel, retiring from the Board of Trustees of Duchess Community College after more than six years of distinguished service. And whereas during her tenure as a member of the board, two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-three, Ms. Lappel served with honor and distinction as a resident of the board and a distinguished alumna of the college. And whereas Ms. Lappel has served in several leadership positions, including vice chair of the board, chair of the Finance and Facilities Committee, chair of the most recent Presidential Search Committee, and member of the Duchess Community College Foundation Board of Directors. And whereas Ms. Lappel provided guidance and support to current and past presidents of Duchess Community College and her fellow board members. And whereas upon her retirement, the Board of Trustees wishes to recognize and commend Ms. Lappel for her dedicated and devoted service as a member of the Board of Trustees. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby extend this appreciation to Ms. Lappel for her dedication and commitment to the excellence of Duchess Community College. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves this resolution on the occasion of Ms. Lappel's retirement from the board and recognition of her exemplary service to the college. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby grants Ms. Lappel the status of trustee emeritus.
Who do you have as second?
You have a second? Yep, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I just want to point out that when we first started doing these, we kind of framed them in these black frames that were kind of crummy. And this looks really nice, if everybody can see it. It's got one of our buildings on top of it. This is, I don't know whose idea this was, John?
No, no, it was Dr. Howard. Came out of marching.
Well, let me just say, this is a much nicer going-away gift than what he has to say here with a little bit of nothing. So we'll figure out the appropriate time to fetch you personally. That concludes my report. Any questions? You have a second? All in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any major extensions? Motion carries officially. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Dr. Jordan's report.
And Dr. Jordan has one item that he wants to share with the board, which is, we were expecting, because of the timing of our Middle States visit, that we would hear from Middle States when the commission met in June, that they reviewed the recommendations of the visiting team. Unfortunately, we didn't make it into that session. So we are now going to be considered for recreditation in November. So we have to wait a little longer to hear about recreditation. So that's the excitement.
That's the briefest presence report we've ever had. Are there any other items for future business that we can think of? There being none, the date of that meeting is August thirty-second, twenty twenty-three. And may ask for a motion to adjourn?
To move.
And who's your second?
Second.
Any deets? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and we'll wrap it here quickly. Maya, I hope it wasn't too long. The workshop takes longer than the actual meeting.